Good evening and welcome to the August 8, 2023 meeting of the Spence Park Strategic School District Board of Education. If you would please rise and join me in the next three lines. Like allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Team. Kick it off. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve? Again, take a second. The all in favor. You go, Lito. Hello, Sean. Five oh. All right. Doing okay. Okay, next order. So, next order of business is privilege at the floor. We have one person who would like to address this. Mr. Barney, if you would please. You know the game, right? So we don't need to go through that.
My name is Donald Barney. I live in six rich boroughs of Brian's. I support GR. My phone number is five eight five four one four nine nine eight seven. I wish to respond to Mr. Gary Bragg's letter emailed today at eight seven twenty twenty three. I want you to respond to the part of the first paragraph. I'll respond to the rest of the future pages. Only have five minutes. Mr. Bragg and C. Bill. This is from his email. Press this is most me. I want to once again, as I did at the beginning of last school year, ask what it is you are hoping to achieve. For my letter of July 2022, I specifically noted that it would be helpful if you would, if you could share with us your ultimate goal, or in other words, what you are seeking as a result of your attendance and questions. We ask this so we can either get to that goal or let you know that what you seek is not possible. It's straight forward. Let me read my response to letters from Mr. Kevin Hutton, three eight twenty twenty two. Mr. Gary Bragg, seven twenty one twenty two. I have copies of both Mr. Hutton's letter and Mr. Bragg's letter here at Temple Leaf. And let me read first my response dated at the board meeting four twenty six twenty twenty two. This is me speaking to you on April twenty sixth. I do not believe that our country or the constitution is systematically racist. I also believe that New York State CRS E Culture Response to Sustainable Education Framework is fundamentally flawed. I invite you to ask me for clarification on this suggested open format where both you and any member of our community may engage in open dialogues concerning this subject. My questions are not arbitrary but fundamental and establishing the foundation of our educational system. I end goal is to identify and have removed from our school district policies and programs that do not align with the basic values of our community. At the board meeting on eight nine twenty twenty two, the response to Mr. Bragg's letter on seven twenty one, I reiterate, my response to Mr. Bragg will be stated upon. I'm leaving a copy of my response this evening. A copy of the copies of Mr. Hutton's letter dated three eight twenty twenty two, Mr. Bragg's letter of seven twenty two twenty two, an email dated eight seven twenty twenty three, as well as copies of my responses on four twenty six twenty twenty two and at eight nine twenty twenty two. I will also email a copy of this evening's response to each board member. Thank you. I'm Barney. I also have, anybody here that's service, I have copies of my response. If anybody lost them, they'll leave. Over on the table. If that's, if that's okay with you. Thank you. And I'll give back your floor and the rest of your letter. I have a lot to say about it.
Thank you. All righty, moving along in the agenda to the consent agenda. There's two addendums. One for classified personnel as well as a certificated addendum. If the board makes a motion, please include those two addendums to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please? Oh, you. Second, Marsha. Second, Marsha. All in favor. Five oh. I'm gonna pause here and ask Mr. Nick Wittske.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. And so for those in the audience, the board through consent agenda just approved our newest assistant principal at the high school. We're thrilled that he's joining Spence Park. He's going to be a Ranger Tyler Torres. Tyler's joined by his husband, his two sons. Tyler comes to us from the Rochester City School District where he has been a Spanish teacher and instructional coach, and we're really excited that he's joining our team. So congratulations, Tyler.
Congratulations and welcome to the Ranger family. Glad to have you all here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, moving right along to Board of Education reports. I've really got a whole lot going on that I can report upon. There is the NISBA New York State School Board Association Convention. Registration has opened up for the end of October. I haven't even given a thought. It's in Buffalo this year, so it's close enough to be annoying. You'd probably stay overnight, given the kinds of activities that usually go on if you go to there.
You're not members.
We are not, but you, we can still go. It's just a different cost. I will let you know that through the course of this year, we will probably be asked to entertain. One of the reps from NISBA who is on, is part of the Monroe County School Board Association, he's asked to, you know, have us reconsider our position on membership in NISBA. So I, I told him we would, we'd have a chance maybe to have him come and give us a short presentation for our consideration. It's end of October twenty five, I weren't saying twenty five to twenty eight, something like that. It well starts on Thursdays and like the big opening thing, I believe, is Friday morning. So, and then they have, you know, throughout that day, there's workshops that you can go to. Marsha, this is the New York State Association, and some of the workshops are really, really good. I've been to the convention a couple of times. We, we did drop our membership a few years back, a couple of years back, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that the convention is pretty useful in terms of information and people that you get to be here from. So something to consider. Um, I think that's really it. I mean, we've got a lot going on. Oh, one other thing. We are in meeting with, with Connie and Lori last week. We did, Lori put together a draft, kind of a tracker, kind of based on what you had brought up. Those, those kind of hangfire things that are out there that get overtaken by events. So she's done a draft. We've taken a look at it. I'm gonna send it around to Cabinet and the rest of the board to get inputs. We're gonna try and keep it simple. You know, here it is. This is what it was and what, you know, what the questions were. But so that we'll have something that'll be a living document that we can keep track of those things that get brought up that need to become the closure at some point.
So what media does that?
Just a Word document.
It's gonna be up on one note.
Simple. Yeah, we're gonna put it up on one note.
That's fine. It's universally accessible.
Yes, exactly. It'll be universally accessible Cabinet, the board, so that everybody can keep track of what's, what's in motion and what's not. We'll be able to better keep track of some of these things because they, you know, they come up and then something else comes up and that one slides off. So we're, we're trying to, trying to do a better job of keeping track of those things.
I appreciate that.
Other than that, I will pass the theme bang over to you.
Sure. Attended the Edmond retreat last week. It was wonderful. Like last year, I left feeling very grateful that we get to serve such a wonderful group of talented administrators and staff. And I thought like Gary said, it was a perfect balance between work and play and art and science, if you will. So thanks for the opportunity for allowing us to attend.
That's, okay. It's over to you.
It's quite a treat. It was very nice to be able to have an opportunity to meet so many people that I knew to be and new to our district. I thought it was intriguing. I thought it was invigorating. And it wasn't. I thought it was a good balance between preparation and information. It will be valuable to us in the future. Thank you.
And I miss ax throwing.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
I have no idea. The last time I had to like play games with like hot balls. Did I miss ax throwing? It was great. I am sorry for this. Work, work, work. We are most quickly approaching the beginning of the school year, so I know it's a hard push for all of you who are here. So I thank you now for the long hours that are approaching. Try to enjoy at least a little bit of summer.
Ben, sorry. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I didn't mention, but thank you all for allowing us to be a part of that. It was a good two days. All right, over to you, sir.
Thank you. And I just also want to thank the board members who are able to attend. I know that it's time out of your respective schedule, both personal and professional. So your willingness to join us really means a lot to our administrative team. I think it's also important too that the board interacts with as many stakeholders as possible. So this is just one thing in which we can do that. So tonight we have four presentations. I'm gonna start off first by asking Mr. Sulford and Mr. Minder to join us. We're to provide an update on food services.
Well, thank you, everyone. Here, Gary and I are here today just to give you an update and talk a little bit about what's been going on in food service for the past year as well as some things that are happening currently. I'm gonna kick it off with just a quick discussion about the agenda and turn it over to Gary. So just a couple of slides tonight, starting off with discussion about funding streams. There have been some streams of money that come into the service fund this year. I'll touch on those. Then transition over to Gary talking about some equipment changes to the main line, talking about the ala car prices and ending with future. But we'll end with a discussion about what's coming in the future in the next year. So funding streams for twenty two, twenty three. Last year, there were increased reimbursements at the federal level for breakfast and lunch, fifteen cents and forty cents. But those increases were for twenty two, twenty three only. So those temporary increases have already gone away, but the new rates were just released on July seventh. So we'll be able to look into how those affect our revenues for the coming year. There was the P E D T grant, which was started during COVID. Second year, I believe, that we received this grant for, surely for any work. We had more supply chain assistance funding that came through from COVID related funding. I believe there came in another bit of supply chain assistance funding coming in twenty three, twenty four year. And then there was some excess fund balance as it closed of the year of the twenty one, twenty two year, which we were then required to use during the last year, and our plan was equipment as well as some repairs. And Gary's gonna touch on a bit of those right now. Oh, yes. So I have to just tell you on funding, I started studying some new equipment. I've been over the years, saying that we're always, you know, a lot of equipment very old, twenty years, thirty years, forty years old. So we took a couple of ways to replace some equipment. It's probably good stuff. Well, it's all good, but well, three years ago, we got an equipment grant from New York State because of COVID. Three years worth of presses to end. So the beginning of this school year, we got, we wanted to create a grant to get coffee ovens, one for a burn in the elementary, one for maybe one that grabbed, we also decided at the time, let's just buy another coffee oven for an element. So we actually made them a lunch. Those we have the others. And we also, this was one, also bought a smaller coffee oven for East Campus. But we also took some of the money, the fund balance that we had, and we bought some needed equipment we bought. I do have locks for, we had two problems. Locks breaking down for a lot of locks for the West Campus. Locks in Castro, we bought a new cooler for my elementary ice cream freezer for two door mess, much needed two door mess. We have a lot of two door messers, I think you see in the back of the line. One side kitchen to put food in, the next side, the other side, take it out, so it's easy. We had those. They were breaking down. That's a lot. They're obviously very full there. We have much needed replacements. I was also able to get a free cooler material associated last August. That was something you could easily do twenty years ago, but then once again, it's all up everybody. It's very hard to get those free coolers in there now. So it was almost like for a year, we had no cooler. I know it's a poor thought, but it could be spot one for one. So then we also replaced some with the fund balance. Appurators, condensers. I'm very excited. We are exposed to being replaced, especially that some of that, the school lunch funds, some evaporators, big repairs. Couple, couple of our disposals. So we made a nice dent in a problem we had for a long time. We made a nice dent this year. Multiple attack, four different ways, four different ways to do it. So it was a exciting place to have to get your equipment, to save for us to get your equipment. Next slide. Next slide is something we did at the main line. This is not new equipment, but repurposed equipment. It's not really before and after. It had a good bit of it before. So the nineteen fifty style, if I knows a high school west kitchen has two serving lines. That's the second serving line. It's basically mirror on everything what the first serving line looked like. We took that out. We had this coming down in east. We were using. And we moved it down to west. We're hoping a couple of things. If this looks better, breaks up the place. We want, you know, we're gonna make it more appealing. Then also look at the old stainless steel serving line. It's like four hot wells with a long stainless steel table. This new line, four hot wells, but second section. It's a cold unit, so we keep it cold easier. There's a second shelf. There's also a cold plate up there. And then third table is, oh, I forgot to mention that. Third table is adjusted table, but on top of it is a new merchandise we bought. The merchandise, you just imagine like one side chicken sandwich, bread and oil, you can slide it down the back. They themselves from the front. We're hoping to give us more variety, the speed of line. So it's something that looks better. In school starts, we know the difference. And also when we get a new, we gotta upgrade the electric. So we decide the other line, it is what it is. It doesn't move with one big long piece. This is three separate pieces. So we decided on the road that they move on culture. First, we have to be building up new pieces and change it if we want to. So we said about that. And we'll see how that works. We give the annual staff as I said about having a whole.
It looks really nice.
It does.
But we had a good one using it. You know, that equipment's not new. It's probably twenty years old. It's
new to us.
New to us, yes. So for next year's pricing, at this point, I would recommend not doing case breakfast prices, not increase lunch prices. But I do have, and you probably saw in the report, a long list of our car prices that I'm looking to increase. We haven't raised prices. I think eighteen ninety affected before that. Our prices have increased a lot since eighteen ninety, especially in the last two years. So that's the case with our price increases. We are asking for a lot of all car price increases. We can talk about that later, but now in the future, I'm gonna skip down to the second part. We're still looking at ways to replace equipment, exploring different options for that. If we try to replace the question, you know, try to replace the program to get more up to date and just more reliable. Big thing at this stage is the C E P, C E P program, which is Community Eligible Provision Program, the USDA program. Program where if you're, you have a district or just a school in the district or schools, they can be eligible if they're free percentage, not their free, and just a free percentage. Just forty percent or higher can apply to this program and all students can get free breakfast and lunch. So in our district at this time, it's only money qualifies. So we have applied for money to be a program school. Hopefully, my contact person's application last week, so I'm still waiting for New York State to let me know. We put our application in. We're on page two of that. Hopefully, we know soon. And so if we get approval, the plan is to start this September, September six, seven free meals for all students at the month for breakfast and lunch. In the future, we're hoping. As we talked, nothing guaranteed that USDA is looking to make that program easier to get into. The number they're throwing out, they talk to us a lot, is they're flooring it from forty to twenty five percent. We don't know if that's what they'll end up on. They'll, they'll explain the middle, but if it's it. And we're thinking, no guarantee that that happens or will happen sometime twenty four. If it goes to twenty five percent, all our schools will be eligible. Maybe not for everybody, but you can pair schools together. So you can pair everybody with money. If combined, there are twenty five percent, there's not be a problem. I think everybody actually is at twenty five percent. That's just a percentage points. If that's the case, we would be looking hopefully by twenty twenty four, have all schools free breakfast and lunch. There's a lot of maybes that still. But there's a lot of chatter, a lot of difference chatter that happens. We're hoping that that would be the big, big school lunch next, the next month and then the next year.
Gary, this C E P approval for month, is it black and white or?
I don't think it's black and white, but the biggest hurdle is forty percent. You need forty percent.
Okay.
You have to prove that you need forty percent. That's the biggest hurdle. I don't know what to do after that. So our numbers were forty three percent. It's just free kids and it's, it's interesting. It's only free students that we call DC download, direct certified downloads from state or homeless or migrant. Not the ones that are free because of application, the life, they don't call me application ones. Luckily, a lot of our students DC download, so
I guess. So I guess my question is if you, if we're at forty three percent, there's not a great area either where at?
I don't, you know, I didn't say anything until I get that back, get our approval from state and ER. I'm, yes, I feel confident, but I, you know.
Thanks.
So I guess that would just be hopefully to improve my ala car price increase. And any questions?
Is there? Is there any? I don't know who to address the question to. So I'm gonna throw it out into the atmosphere and somebody answer for me. Is there any concern within the district that we have one school that will qualify for free lunch for all students and not the other schools?
Yep. Discuss that.
That's going to be very clear. That is not saying I would like students to have.
I do have five reach though. The grease is all free. They were eleven out of seventeen, seventeen schools last year. Two years ago, there were eight out of seventeen and there were nine of the seventeen, you know. So he has dealt with that and he has told me there is, you know, he will be on calls. He will be getting some questions. But, you know, he says this work in program for it. So yeah, there's probably some questions about that.
It's really important just to benefit the messaging as well in terms of how we convey this. And similar to what Gary shared with me with, you know, neighboring school districts that did not have hundred percent of their schools eligible. But I think we're all aiming for that. It just may not happen next year. It's gonna hopefully happen in the near future though.
Do you suggest that we explain that when parents come to us and ask this question? What would be the simple answer?
Talk to Gary.
I think you also, if you don't, if you have a school, it's also, you have lots of students there.
Let me be very clear. That is not at all what I was suggesting. If we have a way for students to get free, you know, breakfast and lunch, I'd like us to.
And then, but the good thing, there will be a lot of school districts like us, maybe not, it's unique that we only have one. Probably crush hundred of it. All their schools will be this free this year except for the high school. You know, so there's gonna be more than just, we may be unique. We only have one student at all. I don't, I don't know if that should be your, I know. Maybe you think that one still.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we come into make a motion to accept the new car prices? Can I have a motion, please?
We can motion.
Second. Mike, any other questions or comments? We can get answered. I have a show hand to prove the increased prices. Okay. But that was five oh. Appreciate your question. Okay. All right, thank you, Gary. Thank you.
Next item that we have involves code of conduct. This is something that I really appreciate the board's willingness to entertain this conversation. And hopefully it's relatively straightforward as we look at recorded conduct. We have section three, page seventeen of the code that allows dress code. And you can see right now that just as each principal has a responsibility in terms of language changes, what we're hoping for is to simply ask the principals to collaborate with myself, with superintendent, just so that we do not have six different approaches when it comes to dress code. We can then be consistent, pre K five, six, eight, nine, twelve. With that then, recommendations, next steps moving forward. Obviously, I want to have a conversation with you to see if there's any concerns. I would hope that, you know, through tonight's conversation, get a head nod or just some kind of affirmation that you're comfortable with this as we move forward. I will then collaborate with our principals so we do have that consistency among all three grade levels that allows that our principals, partners start the school year and communicate any changes or any expectations from the respective dress codes that they can communicate that with their respective learning communities. And then from there, on September fifth, we would take the revised code of conduct with the aforementioned changes to consent agenda for your approval.
Yeah, this is.
Well, question on process though. It's since revised to the code of conduct. Typically, I mean, can it be approved in the consent agenda?
Yeah, we would, okay.
Okay, that would be different than previous versions of code conduct. That require a public hearing or these notes. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that one could consider that we could do a public hearing right before, if you'd like to adapt, you know, five fifty five and advertise it and then move forward to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to, in my head, kind of considering the, the depth of the change. I mean, when we've changed like sections of the code of conduct, you know, gone through more than just a, you know, a very brief wording change. This just changes the authority from just the principals to the principal and the superintendent. And I'm not sure.
I think it's just, truly it's like a procedural process. It's just a.
I know, I know. And I'm not, I don't know, Marsha, I'm like, oh, don't know if we need to, if there's something that requires change. We could ask, we could ask Sarah.
Just, I mean, I, and I would be okay. It's a very minor change. I'd be okay. I just don't want to, if.
Get sideways with, you know.
I don't want, like, I just want to follow whatever the process is. So if it requires a public hearing, if it's before, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to make sure that we're following that we're doing.
Sarah on it just to see. We'll just, we'll take Sarah on it, just to see, make sure that we're within our rights to just make that kind of a editorial change without a public hearing.
Can you go back? Could we add commas, building principles comma in conjunction with the superintendent?
Yes.
Yeah.
I like that, thanks very much.
Wrong, it's wrong.
I think how many of us are English people? There are quite a few of us.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing is this, it's the procedure negatives between buildings and just the transition between Cosgrove and high school, and in the very beginning of this year, you'll have some student that gets talked to about their drastic way they're appearance and very likely that they're called, it's on the board like, because they're not having the answers they get up straight. Generally, I have very little sympathy for this situation. The expectations are set early on, it's just transitional, transition.
Any other comments?
I don't know how, I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, how were they gonna discipline students that don't agree with it? Every chance you walk down the streets right now has some interest, or at least females. That's gonna be a real, in an act to enforce unless we have something.
I think the hope is at the beginning of the school year for to really establish clear expectations, similar to, uh, you know, elementary teachers who establish their routines and they have assistance for everything, uh, they reinforce their routines. And then by the time my cover hits, the students know what is expected of them, I think in terms of what you're asking about. At least the progressive discipline, and hoping that there's gonna be compliance, you hope that a reasonable conversation will too. You know, uh, put on another shirt or change a shirt or, you know, phone call home. Um, I'm hoping that it's not gonna be as challenging as it could possibly be. Uh, but I think we have to be really clear in our expectations, uh, upfront. I think the hope is with this, for me to work with the principals, uh, communicate what the expectations are, so families know, uh, relatively within next two weeks, I would hope. Uh, and then as we communicate that, reinforce expectations, want those students to.
Just, I'm gonna piggyback on that, just so everybody understands my position is that I, this change I'm okay with, I mean, this change to the code. If some of the building level, which is not a board member's decision, so I'm gonna be very clear, my role as a board member is for this decision. The building level dress code, if that had been proposed to me to be the code of conduct dress code, Leah would have voted no. I have a lot of, uh, there are parts of building level dress codes that Leah Brown personally does not support, but that is not my role here. So this change I would make. If you were to ask me, you know, if I supported some of the specific parts of that dress code, the answer would be I don't. I have a much different, um, feeling about dress code than I, truthfully, I would almost never address it in terms of discipline. And I do think that unless it was a safety issue, something overtly, uh, offensive to students, to other students, I wouldn't address it, um, but that is my position. Uh, so this change I'm okay with, you know, but I, the other things I would not support, but you're not asking for that, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so are we good then for continuing forward with this, and we'll, we'll find out about the procedural thing, thank you.
Yeah, I would envision that done on August eighteenth news notes, so just provide the board update, gives us a little bit of time just to work this around. If we need to have a public hearing, if so, then we'll schedule it just on September fifth, maybe five forty-five, similar to what we did last year. Um, I would imagine it'll be relatively quick public hearing, uh, but at least we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's.
Okay, yeah, that's just.
Thank you. We're gonna transition to reading protocols at high school and middle school. And I'll start off, I'll start off just with, uh, my appreciation for the questions that are posed about this topic. I, I think it's really important that, um, we really have a clear understanding of the direction we want to head. And I, I think that, um, your question kind of allows us to dig a little bit deeper, for us to engage in really thoughtful, meaningful dialogue uh, with teachers or vet administrators, ultimately the parents and students. Um, so I, I appreciate, um, all the questions that have been dropped our way when it comes to this topic. What we're gonna do right now is, Mr. Allen and myself are just gonna talk a little bit about where we've been and where we're heading, so.
So to begin, we're just gonna take a look at the Supreme Protocols Committee that we, excuse me, put together of various stakeholders, which met throughout the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-first school year. On this slide, you can see our focus, you can see our short and long-term goals, purpose of grading, and then the purpose of assessment. Um, I was lucky enough to be a part of this committee, uh, with other administrators, teachers, community members, parents as well. So that's what we're really going to address, and in our meetings with Sontola, his team, and also team at the high school. These are really the areas of focus, um, and where we're going, that we've talked about as we start to approach the twenty-three, twenty-four school. So we'll begin with the, um, Cosgrove and where they're going within this upcoming school year. So you can see, a lot of this is really big picture items, trying to create some consistency across, uh, the building. As they are in more of an infancy stage in this work, following it close behind the, the high school. So you can see, uh, things such as the building wide lay homework policy, retake policy, and then grading practices, all of which again, standardized to have some consistency across departments, across the building. Moving forward, you see again, a grading philosophy to be held true across the building. Professional learning during the faculty meetings, which will always, will also play a large part in curriculum staff development this year. Making sure that we are producing informative and summative assessments aligned to, um, priority standards. And that our assessments are actually assessing what we're, um, the standards that they're aligned to. And then, and again, part and parcel of that assessment design, which will start at curriculum staff development. And then also move into department meetings and teacher leadership meetings at the high school. Thought exchange, uh, one of the components from the committee was that, uh, through larger, more frequent communication, really just getting feedback from the community. So this is, uh, something that the committee talked about. Jim and his team have planned upon as we move into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And ultimately approve changes to building grading policies implemented during that school.
So I think it's really important to note that, um, through this process, uh, we recognize that if we were in this position last year, uh, with a high school, perhaps, um, we would have been able to kind of iron out some of the, the issues that we've encountered. So I think we need to take ownership on that. Um, I also would say too that, uh, all the variables that are involved between twelve hundred students, hundred and twenty faculty members, um, you know, numerous courses that each child takes, you know, the, the numbers start to really grow exponentially in terms of all the different variables. And so I think with the committee, what we're trying to do and the proposal that we submitted, uh, is really to kind of solidify understanding when it comes to grading and assessment protocols. Um, cause I don't think that's really happened before here in Spencerport. If you're to look at our work policy, it's really nebulous, uh, in terms of what is outlined when it comes to curriculum instruction and evaluation. So the work that the high school is doing is important work. Um, I will share that, you know, in June, from the ad hoc committee, we presented the Board of Education, along with teachers at the middle school and teachers at the high school, the recommendations from the committee. Uh, as Mr. Allen just shared, you know, we have an opportunity during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to really kind of pilot different initiatives at Cosgrove. So we can really gain some important feedback, so that we can kind of navigate to figure out, okay, what are our next steps? So it's almost like we're taking two steps forward, one step back, uh, at Cosgrove. Wish we had that opportunity to do that at the high school, uh, but we're really optimistic how we're, our direction, how we're moving forward. So this break here is just kind of a real quick summary, quick, cause it's a lot of work, in terms of purpose of grading, purpose of assessments, different distinctions between the timeline of how we communicate this information, um, how we convey it to parents for presentation, and then what it looks like moving forward, um, on our forward-facing communication with our, uh, community via our website. So with these implementations, uh, we really felt from the community, like, uh, Mr. Allen just shared, really needed a, really dedicate time to have a clear understanding of what does assessment mean, what does grading mean? And so there's a lot of work there, and you, you saw from a list that we submitted to you, over thirty individuals who represented every stakeholder group. Um, so that was really, really important. I think moving forward, uh, what we've been doing is to ensure that each department has established grading commitments. Commitments that are, are unique to math, unique to art, unique, et cetera, et cetera. I think from there, we also then need to have a conversation with our building-wide commitments when it comes to grading protocols. And I think similar to what Dr. Nelson shared with us last week with that proper of, you know, if you wanna go fast, go alone. You wanna go far, go together. So having a lot of individuals, such as the Board of Education, kind of help us through this process is really, really important. So here you can just see these different commitments and what we're looking at in terms of how we review the grading practices among each department, so that there's really clear understanding what the expectations are. Because I think, you know, to the point that's been made on more than one occasion, when we have an individual that kind of deviates from this understanding, I think it really weakens, you know, our whole protocols and what we're trying to accomplish. So it's really something too, what I've shared with, you know, the high school administrators, is that we need to, there's a sense of accountability. If we're making this commitment, then we need to hold people accountable to ensure that this commitment falls through. So the next piece too, as we look at this, you know, the feedback that we've received is really, really helpful. You know, for commentary, but just videos, I think us just putting things, black and white, on the district website, just saying, here's our protocols, here's our philosophy, here's what it's gonna look like, both the syllabi and the building commitments is really, really important. So that's something that we're committed to, and our hope is to have it uploaded by August eighteenth next week. Um, this has to occur through conversations with teacher leaders and building administrators, which is scheduled for this Thursday. And so that agenda that they have in terms of identifying all the different pieces, which I'll talk about specifically in a few moments, is really, really important. We also recognize too that through this process, we also have to get feedback. We need to hear from stakeholders in terms of how it is working, so to continue to fine tune it. I, I know that might not be the answer that you want to hear, but, you know, it is a work in progress. Similar to our assessments as well, we're continuously revising our assessments. As standards change, when you look at our tier one type of, uh, success with our assessments, we know that if we're doing things really, really well, right, perhaps we have to spend a little bit less time on that. Because there's other areas where there's gaps based on learning standards that we need to provide more attention to. So that's where assessment protocols are really, really helpful, it's that cyclical nature that we have across all three levels. And I also alluded to just that the use of eDoctrine is essential, where all of our core courses now are uploaded in the edoctrine across board, pre K through twelfth grade, and now we're in the throes right now of uploading them for our special area classes too. We have countless assessment, uh, release sites for teachers, uh, throughout the school year, throughout the summer. Cause we understand the power of really having high-quality assessments. So that work was, is gonna just be continuous, also it's really important too, uh, that they're aligned to the standards. That's really where we need to ensure that we have rigorous, reliable, and valid assessments. I think, you know, obviously with PL time, you know, when we provide departments an opportunity, what is the end outcome? What is the thing that they're gonna produce by the time that they can finish their meeting, finish their session? Uh, and then how we can kind of ensure that we're vetting that work to validate that it aligns with our expectations. So as you heard me mention, uh, when we look at this Thursday, all the different protocols, um, that administrators are gonna lead with their teacher leaders. So some questions in terms of a number of assessments, I will share with you, it's about two or three assessments, you know, per quarter. And it varies depending on discipline, but I will share it's about two or three. I think in terms of how we post this information in independent campus, the term that's been used in the past in a reasonable timeframe, I think for me, there's been some outliers where that's, uh, unacceptable. And so we need to really kind of have the teacher leaders work with the high school administrators on what is a reasonable timeframe. So for example, when we go to the observation process, there's a timeframe between one administrator conducts an observation for a teacher. You know, we try to have their observation report to them within five days. That's an obligation that we have. I think we also have an obligation for our students, that if they take a summative assessment, that they should know where they stand within a reasonable timeframe of five days or less. We also talked too just about, um, homework and that misnomer that is going away. At no point, as you saw from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, with our homework ad hoc committee, where we, we generated expectations for K five, where there's time limits for both K two and then three, five, because we didn't wanna just inundate students with busy work. And also, we, we had protocols in place for sixth fall, where we wanted to ensure that homework was meaningful, purposeful, aligned to standards, and really captured what an individual needs to know. Granted, there's certain courses where independent learning is gonna be at a higher level than some other courses, just based on the sheer demand of said course. I think I've shared in the past, advanced placement's a really good example of that. If you're gonna earn college credit, then it might take a little bit more time independently for us to do this work. If you saw as well, just that change, so we have some of assessments worth about eighty percent. And then independent learning, which is formally classified as formative assessment, is twenty percent. So this, you can't see my screen. Um, so this document right here, in terms of just the update that we've provided, I think the other piece too that we really need to discuss is just the retake process. So students are eligible, every student will be eligible for retake, what does that look like? What is it that they're gonna do, are they gonna have to fill out a form or spin a form, uh, just to say that they're interested in that retake? Um, I think our goal is to ensure that we capture student learning. And student learning differs from day to day. Also, we have to provide an opportunity that if students already mastered, let's say seventy percent of a concept, and their grade is suffering because that thirty percent, whichever reteach is occurring, that you can then reassess that student. So for example, you know, my daughter failed her driver's test, not once, not twice, not three times, or four times. And so, uh, so the amount of support that she required on the different elements where she needed additional assistance on her driving, you know, we need to break that down, so whether it's parental parking, whether it's, et cetera. So I, I share that with you, um.
To her demise.
Well, to my financial demise with her insurance, but, uh, um, I share that with you because I, I think it's a really good example in terms of the work that we need to do in terms of how we personalize that learning experience for students. Because how Gary performed on this assessment might be different than how Megan performed on a suspect. And both individuals may require retake, and so we need to ensure that we capture what we need to capture, so they can demonstrate the necessary understanding. So the, I think the other piece too, just speaks for itself, those changes that we made from the dollar that we've shared, uh, I just wanna kind of just say that I appreciate once again, just the feedback that you provided to date, and I know that hopefully you will continue to provide.
Yeah, I have some quick question about, um, so two or three summative assessments with, um, hopefully the students getting the grades back within a reasonable timeframe. I'm hoping too that that reasonable timeframe then allows for a retake before the end of the quarter. So like backing it up, if it's five days, then backing it up ten days to allow.
Yeah, I think there's some outliers where, uh, assessments were administered on the last day of the quarter, and then students weren't receiving feedback till two weeks later, and then, you know, by that time, you know, it's three weeks have transpired and the individual is now onto different concepts of their learning that's necessarily for, for students, so, yep.
So do the teachers have to, um, create the new retakes every time, because otherwise, sorry, you know what the questions are?
I think it varies, I, I think it varies from, uh, concept to concept, teacher to teacher, but, uh, teachers have been working on retakes, have been developing retakes, uh, based on the different summative assessments that they've generated. Um, I, I think when you look at two to three per quarter, so now we're looking at eight to twelve during the school year, so you're not talking about a, a lot of summative assessments, so I think those pieces, um, I'm of the proponent that if you only struggle on just, you know, the small portion, I, I should be creating a retake that really aligns with that small portion.
So you have a hundred and twenty students that you're teaching, and you have to come up with several retakes because the concept wasn't completed or wasn't understood, then, and you're teaching five classes. I'm, I'm just thinking, how is the teacher gonna have enough light?
I'm, I'm just thinking, how is the teacher going to have enough life, the time to do all that?
I think respectfully, I worry about that assessment. And I worry about, was that assessment aligned with the curriculum, is it aligned with instruction? Was it, you know, that's for me is it tier one issue?
Evaluating the assessment.
Correct.
Or the learning necessary that went into this.
Correct, yeah.
I do think that last, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, but also through the evaluation of data in edoctrine, I think the, what that allows us is an opportunity to start to see trends. Or themes within that data, right? So while you might have X number of students, it's probable that you're going to see certain themes become true across those that that number of students. Where you're not looking to create multiple reassessments, but rather to say, okay, what was a concept, a theme, a skill? Component testers, component retakes, like Mr. English just talked about, the idea that we can, we can hone in on that one area without creating an entirely.
Just from a very high level, whatever take policies, it's a being at an apartment level. That retake policy needs to be enforced consistently within the department and something that. Last year and the other component of retakes were really failing her was. Couldn't find the retake policy, Sherlock Holmes to figure out what he wants. So perhaps there would be a way to really get it out in front, so students and families, usually it's the parents. Really figure out what is the most, perhaps if it was just a. Pogus tape or a pin blank top of their, that teacher's school page, all the important stuff, something like that. Because it's spent a lot of time. Last year, people calling, what's the retake policy came, but I'm like, oh, I'll go find it.
Yeah, I think that's open by next Friday, by the eighteenth for us to post all this. So the building-wide commitments will be posted on the website, syllabi will be posted on the website so that every individual has access to it. So they understand and we don't want to make it so. You know, difficult where they have to kind of pour through things, just, you know, by us posting it and us being as transparent as possible in terms of what it looks like. I think that's really the mode of operation we're trying to follow here.
You know, I shared this with you, but I'll share, I appreciate that. That was one of the things that last year I think was the hardest. You know, when I heard from parents or myself as a parent to navigate is figuring out where the information was. And especially if your students in different buildings, in a different, having something posted that's accessible, that's boy searchable. If you could type it in and it actually could search for you, that makes it extremely helpful to parents. Trying to figure out, I can't tell you the number of times I had parents, including board members, say like. Do you remember how to do that link to school? Do you know, I mean, read just, it's like one more passcode that you can't remember. So having it just out there, it's not, I know it's not your students' data, but having what the policy is, who to contact, that's a huge help for them.
Is the syllabus? Is there a. A standard template for syllabi?
There are certain themes that we want every syllabi to kind of include, but they're not just a blank template that they that fill in.
The syllabus is boosted include. The roadmap for the number of assessments that will be.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. The number of assessments, that's something that I spoke with Justin Sean about is, I think that has to be a non-negotiable, just where we say two or three per quarter. I think it's be helpful, not only just to say that, but if they know the wrong timeline as well. I don't think that learning should be administered for our students in terms of when we're going to be assessing them, so.
That would be a department decision.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Clarify for me because I know I'm looking at the homework expectations. Is this so that all students have the same expectations? For example, I have students who have a lot of homework every night. And other students in the same class at grade, at best, that had no homework every night. And they, you know, I was getting complaints just not even, just being a family. You know, why, why is, so I'm assuming that this means across the board that that would be the same policy. There are going to be some teachers that.
Same policy, but students may come home with different amounts of work. So.
They need to be a question.
Or because, right, they finished class or for whatever reason. So I. I just wanted to clarify that one piece, because I mean, people may, there may be students in the same class, the same thing, have different homework than somebody else. It's not always.
Correct. I could assign, I could assign an independent assignment, you know, Gary might do it during his study hall or during activity here before practice. Megan may say, you know, I'd rather socialize with my friends and then she's doing it now and.
I, I think one of the things that I was remiss in mentioning was the fact that to Ty's point, this work's got to be set. Right? We have to build a natural. Points where we can assess and reflect on the work that we've done. So to that end, we are scheduling two meetings to get the committee back together. Hopefully, we're looking at the end of November, early December, and again in the spring, to really do just that. For us to reflect on the work that's done at the high school and for the middle school, to look at the work that's done at the high school as we get to, you know, what are we doing, what have we learned, and where are we going?
Our base last year is that. Regardless of what happened, side raise the district's inability to communicate. Pither was limited in certain ways. So what do you anticipate doing should the same things occur to really respond to the situations with much more time? What can, what are you probably going to do in the event that things don't happen?
I think the product of planning, I think the product of communication is really, I'm hoping you can, you know, ameliorate a lot of these issues. And I also think then us being on the same page, you need members of the department, high school in general, that they're following consistent protocols. I think that's really important too. I think if it goes off the rails, then I'll be the first to kind of share, hey, we have a real issue here. And we need to figure it out. And I think that's something that we need to be really, really quickly. Trust me, this is when we look at our priorities for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, a grading assessment is, you know, right up there. Along with a couple of other items that we've talked about. So we'll be discussing this during team and teacher leader meetings. Be discussing this during our curriculum staff developments, during our teaching team leader release days, during our half-day release days, during our. Super dennis conference days, through department meetings, through faculty meetings. So this will be kind of a, a topic that will be forward facing twenty-four seven for all of our individuals. So I think that if something doesn't go as anticipated, I'm hoping that we're the first to know. I think too then, just the thought exchange as well, as we then plan the thought exchange, you know, send out communications to our high school families first, you know. Part of the end of the calendar year, so November, December, after the first market period, I think that's really important. And I think as well, as a middle school, then pile us different pieces, us doing that in January, February, to hear from our middle school learning community. And then we would then present to the board of education about how things are going. You know, I would hope January timeframe for the high school, perhaps present any changes to the board in the spring for Cosgrove.
Oh, what's the staff reaction then so far?
I think possible. Yeah, I, I think that, you know, talking to teachers today that were working on assessments and they're like, we're doing this. So we're really excited about this, this opportunity for final results, that's an opportunity with the platform for edoctrine to kind of upload that, have something that's common for the district. I also think too that Thursday is really going to be important in terms of having teacher leaders who are, you know, leading their respective departments. They're the experts in those fields, so we need to hear from them. Because they have a really important voice as they help us kind of support this work and lead their respective departments with the assistance of building and district level administrators.
You have the questions?
Explain to me about the incomplete.
Sure.
Says that they will have. They have, they have not taken some dip assessments, will get an incomplete. Is that on the report card?
Correct, yeah. So somewhere when you're a teacher, so perhaps you have an individual that was sick the last two weeks. And you're just waiting for them to kind of provide some, some work. You know, the protocol is that the teacher then approaches the principal and say, I know that we have to release a report card. Are you okay if I provide, you know, Johnny an incomplete for the first quarter? I would then share as a principal, that sounds great. You tell me when the plan is, when that incomplete is going to turn into a grade.
So by the second quarter, that would be on the report card.
I think the burden is twofold, right? It's a symbiotic relationship between the teacher and the student. So if a student happens to be absent on a summit of assessment date, then it's, you know, both parties responsibility to figure out, okay. When are they going to take this assessment so that we can really measure our understanding?
Thank you. Awesome.
Our last item, I got to turn over to Mr. Wood, who's going to be discussing our tax rate.
Mr. Zinkovich, so you probably heard my sigh of relief yesterday. There was no change with the.
That's my window.
That's exactly for the five twenties, which allowed the tax rates to stay the same. Because of that, the county was able to provide the information necessary, so. Tax warrant, so really the tax rate numbers for each town are the same as what I shared during the one highest amount. So really just looking for your approval and then for those that did not sign the warrant. Questions? Can I have a motion to accept the option of the tax rate? Mike, second. Megan, all in favor? Five oh, thank you. Yeah, so I think Mike, we have largely decided. Okay, with that, we're on to meeting evaluation. We're just at the hour mark. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing, okay, I'm hearing them. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mike, second. Marsha, all in favor?